This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. Please. And we're acknowledging that Mrs. McLeod is absent this evening due to a work obligation. At this time, I ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any awards or recognitions this evening, so we will move along to the superintendent's report. Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. This is, of course, a special time of year. We're launching into the holiday season, which is a time to celebrate with friends and family. And as we gather around our Thanksgiving tables this week, as I mentioned in this week's blog, we will be grateful for the men and women who are sacrificing their time with their families in order to serve in our armed forces, which is incredibly fitting because this is National Military Family Appreciation Month. You know, as you know, we are one of the largest military-connected school divisions in the country, with about 30% of our children having some connection to the military. I'm proud of the work and the supports that we provide our military families, from our military school counselors and our military school liaison officers, to our JS2S and our S2S programs, and our specialized STEM initiatives supported by Department of Defense grants. We have a comprehensive set of offerings for our military families, but as we all know, sometimes it's not really the program or the initiative that makes the biggest impact or difference. Sometimes, in fact, most of the time, it's the personal touch, the one-on-one with our families, that matters the most. And tonight, I'm proud to showcase what this looks like for one of our military families at Ocean Lakes Elementary School. So let's see how second-grade teacher Amy Wetmore helped make a lasting impression for one of her students.
It's a pleasure to work with military children because they offer so many diverse backgrounds. They have life experiences that some kids never get to experience. So you have to look at the whole child to understand how to meet their needs.
Since she always like, "Are you okay? Are you okay?" And I would always say yes, but she's like, "Are you sure? Are you sure?" Since half the time, I would not be okay.
We had some rough mornings at home, and knowing that she was coming in and that Ms. Wetmore would be here to greet her and give her a hug and kind of set her on the right path for the day was absolutely helpful.
There's a lot of unknowns with deployment. Being able to walk through the child's perspective and knowing everything I knew as an adult, it was nice to know that I could be her comfort.
She would always keep me on track. She would always keep me focused, and it would help a lot.
They had a field trip coming up, and my husband was actually able to chaperone the field trip. So they kind of talked and were like, "Oh, wait a minute. You're on the bush. Well, my husband's on the bush." And so Ace came home very excited that her teacher's husband was also on daddy's ship.
So that extra little Hershey kiss, it's something that I do with my girls when dad deployed. So providing that to my students also, because school can be so stressful, and then adding dad leaving, mom leaving, that extra little touch.
It just starts me off with a great day and all, and just makes it easier.
With as many military children that we have, we're fostering these relationships. We're laying foundations. We're providing the social-emotional support because outside the walls of the school building, we're building the future. And we're building these kids to have skills and approaches to things that won't end when elementary school ends.
We've been blessed. We have been in Virginia Beach schools. This is our eighth year. We have had some great teachers throughout the time. So having teachers like Ms. Wetmore and other military spouses is definitely extremely helpful, puts me much more at ease as a parent, knowing that there's the understanding at the school level as well as at the division level of the challenges that these kids face.
You know, like Ms. Yuha said, we are incredibly fortunate to have a division that's filled with compassionate and understanding staff who are here to support our military families and, in many cases, are members of our military family community. Unfortunately, the Yuha's family and Ms. Wetmore could not be here tonight, but I am pleased that Ocean Lakes Principal Dr. Linda Reese is here. Linda, if you could just stand so we could thank you. And you know, Linda, I just want to say thank you for all that your school is doing to be a welcoming and inviting place, not just for our military children, but for all of our students and our families. Thank you so much for what you do. So this Compass Keeper video will be posted on the homepage of VBschools.com, and I hope you'll share that to highlight all of the wonderful things that happen here in Virginia Beach all the time for our military families, but certainly during National Military Family Appreciation Month. You can also visit the division's blog, The Core, to read about fellow members of the Compass Keepers Club. And before I wrap up, let me just take this opportunity to wish our board, our students, and our staff, as well as our entire VB Schools community, a very happy Thanksgiving break. I hope everyone has a safe and relaxing holiday. And Madam Chairwoman, that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on November 8th. Mrs. Felton has made the motion. Mrs. Riggs has seconded the motion. The voting board is open. The minutes of our November 8th meeting have been approved. As we discussed in our workshop this evening, we will be making three adjustments to our agenda this evening. In our workshop, we actually listened to the presentation about the Green Run High School Innovative Lab first, and then second, so we just switched it. And then second, we listened to the Compass to 2020, which was item C. So we switched that to B. And then the other changes that we've discussed in workshop this evening is the addition of Policy 7-21 regarding community relations, citizen advisory committees to our information agenda, and it will become item F13. And then the third adjustment is to move item B from the consent agenda to action D. Mr. Edwards has asked for that to be moved to action so that we can get a short briefing about it and have some discussion if necessary. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as adjusted. Mrs. Holtz has made the motion. Mr. Edwards has seconded. The voting board is open. The agenda has been adopted. Under consent agenda this evening, we have two items. The first is the Digital Learning Anchor School Initiative, a developmental evaluation recommendation, and the second is the reimbursement payment of employee legal fees. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Manning has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Rye. The voting board is open. The consent agenda has been approved. We have four items for action this evening. The first is the chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. Motion is made by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Riggs. Is there a discussion? None? The voting board is open. The personnel report and administrative appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce our new administrators?
I would. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. If I could ask Molly Lewis to stand up. You all probably recognize Molly. She's worked in York County School Division, but has served with distinction in Virginia Beach City Public Schools since 2011 as a teacher at Providence and instructional technology specialist across several schools, and most recently in her current position as an instructional specialist in the Department of Teaching and Learning. And this evening, I'm pleased that you've approved our recommendation for her to serve as the coordinator of elementary education in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. And I believe I saw you have a guest with you. Well, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. Also, this is probably a matter of pro forma. Maybe a little bit of retirement is too much of a good thing, so we'd like to welcome back into the fold David Pace, if you could please stand up. And David, we are glad to have you back as the Director of Transportation, and we welcome you out of retirement and back into the Virginia Beach family. And David, I think you have a guest with you.
Yes, I do. This is Lisa.
Hi, Lisa. Thank you for being with us tonight. We appreciate you. Thank you, David. Madam Chairwoman, and that is it.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Next, under action, we have the Biennial School Calendars. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Biennial School Calendars for school year 2018, 19, and school year 2000, not 2000, 2019, 2020. Motion is made by Mrs. Holtz, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Do we have any questions? Mr. Edwards.
Well, I think for the public, you know, this is the end of an exhaustive process which included a lot of interaction with the public and a formal committee, and a lot of digital input from the community as well as firsthand. And I want to thank your effort and all your colleagues that pulled this together, presented it to the board on a couple of occasions, and I'm very happy we're doing two years.
Great. I think this is a first.
It is, yeah.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Wow, seeing none.
Yeah.
The voting board is open. Thank you. Biennial School Calendars have been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda for the 2018 General Assembly Session. Motion is made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Oh, wow. Oh, okay, Ms. Williams. I was beginning to think we were going to sail through things this evening.
No, Joel, thanks for changing some of the language that I had asked for the other day, and for also, I know you're going to be making talking points. I just want to reiterate on the school safety, and I had it here in front of me a second ago, but I've got so many papers. But the first part of that school safety is to make sure that school divisions can still have the right to suspend students if necessary, because last year, they were trying to tell us that we couldn't do that at all. Is that correct?
That is correct. And what you say about legislation about trying to essentially, what we said to our delegation was tie our hands when it came to student discipline by saying that we couldn't suspend or could only suspend for very limited circumstances was a problem. And what we went back and told them was, we really need to statewide, look at best practices. You should take a look at what we're doing here in Virginia Beach. And that is what they seem to be doing. So I think we're in a good trajectory there.
Yeah, I like that part. And the second half of that, I think I shared earlier to you, I do have a little heartburn with the alternative practices because they're not laid out. But still, with alternative practices, we're still talking about suspensions. We're not saying that teachers cannot refer children. We're talking about elementary suspensions in that other half. Correct?
I think the best thing to say is that they're sort of in the early stages of defining what that is. So the vagueness in our position is purposeful because I think that that conversation is ongoing at the state level. But I don't think that we would ever support anything that would come out that said, again, that you could tie the hands of local school divisions. There's only so many things that we can do to respond to specific behavioral issues. But I think the work, as we saw in our workshop earlier, that we're doing here in Virginia Beach, and I think they're discussing statewide, to help reduce those behaviors is a good thing for our students in our classrooms.
Correct. So we just need to make clear that the teachers still have, you know, flexibility and can still, with positive reinforcement and discipline, you can, you know, still write referrals if you need to, and all that good stuff. So I just wanted to clarify that. I want to thank the Legislative Committee. Y'all have done a great job. I know how much hard work it is, and I appreciate the work put forth. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Manning.
And I just want to state for the record that I discussed my disagreement with the specific agenda items in last week's, or last meeting's workshop.
Thank you. Seeing for the discussion, the voting board is open. Okay. And the legislative agenda for the 2018 General Assembly Session has been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the John B. Diya Elementary School Dominion Energy Easement. Motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Mrs. Holtz. Is there any discussion? Mr. Edwards.
Well, since I asked it to be moved, I mean, are we erecting things above ground level within this? I realize it's only 1,300 square feet, but...
No, sir. It's completely underground. Virginia Power, we need the new service for the part that you see being built right now. So it's, Virginia Power can feed, they can get to that location. They just need a 75-foot easement to get to a new transformer they're going to set, which will power up a new electrical room that we're building, which will power the entire school.
Okay. And there was, I believe, a typo in there regarding the city manager, like we found in the last one.
Yes, and I think we caught that right just in time.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The John B. Diya Elementary School Dominion Energy Easement has been approved. We have several items for information this evening, and the first is the textbook adoptions.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm here this evening to provide you with information regarding the textbook adoption committee's selections for Family and Consumer Sciences. The textbooks recommended for the consideration are scheduled for implementation in the fall of 2018. Before presenting our recommendation, I'd like to thank Family and Consumer Sciences Coordinator Kathleen Vuno, committee members, and industry experts for dedicating their time and efforts to choose the best textbooks for our students. And we have a couple of committee members here, as well as Ms. Vuno and our director, Dr. Lockett. On the screen, there we go. On the screen, you see the recommendation, Recommended First Choice Textbook Selection for the Course Parenting and Child Development. The committee has selected Child Development: Early Stages Through Age 12. This text meets all of the national standards as well as VDOE competencies. The text emphasizes the application of theory through authentic experiential learning. This student resource will be in digital form and replaces the current textbook, which has been in use for six years. For Introduction to Child Care Occupations, the committee has selected Child Care Today as its first choice. This text meets all of the national standards as well as VDOE competencies. The text has excellent activities that support earning a Child Development Associate Industry credential. There is currently not a textbook in use for this class. The committee has selected Working with Young Children as its first choice for early childhood education, years one and two. This text meets all of the national standards as well as VDOE competencies. The text is aligned with the National Association for Education of Young Children Standards. The supplemental resources, including the Observation Guide and Portfolio, are compatible with Schoology as well. The textbook currently in place has been in use for eight years. The committee has selected Exploring Life and Career as its first choice for teen living. This digital text is comprehensive and offers online interactive resources that are age-appropriate and customizable for students. The textbook currently in use for teen living has a copyright date of 2004 and has been in use for the past 13 years. This slide outlines the cost implications for the initial and total implementation of the first choice textbook for each course. The total cost involved for the first year of implementation will be approximately $91,000. While we would normally project the cost of replacement texts, we have opted to use digital texts that will not require replacements. However, we still have included a 3% replacement figure to account for potential enrollment increases over the course of the adoption. Therefore, the total cost of the six-year implementation process would be just under Thank you for consideration of the committee's recommendations. I have with me this evening members of the Adoption Committee, as well as Kathleen Vuno, our coordinator, and Sarah Lockett, our director. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions from the board? Mr. Edwards.
The, it still kind of bugs me to, it doesn't seem like we're saving any money by going digital. I mean, the unit prices for that license are comparable or potentially even higher. And it's like the textbook industry has decided, well, okay, we don't have to print, but we certainly don't have to lower our prices. And did we, I know in other areas, like in social studies, we have looked for alternatives. And do we have a protocol which, I mean, I noticed in reading the timeline for all of the adoptions, the very first thing was to go to the publishers and get their latest, you know. And, but, I didn't see anything in there that the committee looked at anything other than textbooks.
So in the RFP process and now in the purchasing process in general, we've created it so it's not just a textbook. It's for software companies. It's for different companies that can support the needs that we have as a division. But you're hitting the nail on the head, Mr. Edwards, that it is, you know, the textbook companies have figured out, when you're going digital, there's still an annual price to it. There, you know, a cost, the contract length. So what we do try to do as well as in negotiations, we try to extend that, to try to get some free years tacked on, or at least negotiate that if we need it for longer, we can get it for a cheaper price for longer. And currently, as we are in the transfer from like a traditional textbook type of resource to a digital, we really are looking for things that we can then manipulate the digital resource to match our curriculum needs, instead of having teachers follow that traditional textbook, just chapter one, chapter two, and so it can better meet our standards. And in this instance of everything they looked at, these were still the best options for us.
Okay. I mean, someday, I hope we can...
I'm trying. I really promise.
Have a small staff to pull digital resources together for us and spend hundreds of thousands rather than millions and millions, you know.
So if I may, we are members of Virginia Go Open and the National Go Open Movement, so we have actually started working with small groups of teachers to cultivate and to look at like CK12 and other open resources so that we can create, so that we can do some blending in the future as we move forward. Because there's also an art to that, because once you start cultivating, the upkeep of the cultivation process is quite a task. But we are absolutely looking in that direction, too.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
James, is it fair to say at this point that the OER that's out there really is not as specific as some of these kinds of classes that we're talking about as well? I mean, I think that's been some of our difficulty, hasn't it?
Absolutely. OER, we're finding more for core content areas, but also with OER, even with what we did with Click for Social Studies and Astronomy to Geography, it's more text and video-based and not as interactive. Some of the activities that are included in here are specific towards those national certifications as well that we try to offer in these specific courses, and we just, we're not finding that in the OER area at this point. But we are looking to create, absolutely.
Any other questions? Mrs. Manning.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this, and it says $81 per license, for example, these are all digital copies. We're not getting hard copies.
Correct.
What is the hard copy cost?
I would have to look. Nicole, do you have that? My belief was it was the same cost for a hard copy as well with, so it would be double the price for the license. But I can get you the specifics on that.
Wow. Okay, so are we getting any hard copies?
No, ma'am.
Is that typical practice?
So in the past...
I mean, there are those parents out there who are like, "I need a hard copy."
So what we do in this instance, as we're moving to one-to-one as a division quicker, what we do in the negotiation, we make sure that every single thing is available offline. So anything that they have, they can save to their device and have at home as well. So if Wi-Fi or anything online is an issue, they have that. So they can save it to their Chromebook, wherever the case may be. If there's a specific need that's supported by a 504 and IP, of course, we would purchase a hard copy for that student.
So, but all of our, but all of our schools don't have devices. So what if a parent wants to access the material and they don't have a device? What do they do then?
So for a few years, we've done now the device repurposing, where DOT is repurposed, and we allow students to check out devices that we've taken out of circulation, so a student could check out a device from their library in secondary schools, so they could have a device that would stay home with them.
So are parents notified of that? If they want, if they're asking for a hard copy, are they given that option to have a device sent home for the parent to look at the book?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to be clear, you, to be clear on this, are you saying that if you bought the hard copy textbook, then to be able to have access from online for that student as well, you'd have to pay both?
There'd be, there'd be an extra charge to have both, correct? Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So for example, the Intro to Child Care Occupations, the textbook was a $75 cost, which is less than the $90 cost for the digital, but we would never purchase just the textbook. It doesn't include the interactive website companion, which includes all the interactive activities to prepare for the certification exams. So the bundle package, which would include the textbook plus the website, which includes the digital copy plus all those interactive pieces, was $116.25 versus the $90 for the, just the digital.
All right, that clears it up. Thank you. Mrs. Rye.
Hello. So you and I have had talks about this before. So just to be clear, some of the courses that we've gone digital, we do have a set of classroom textbooks. So what determines when we do and when we don't get a set of classroom books?
Depends on the teacher need and the need of the class. And really, when we, when we work with the teachers on the committee, we try to give them the final say of what would be best in their classroom situation, whether they'd want a hard copy textbook or just the digital format.
Okay. And I think it is good for the public to know because the, you know, it's just, I think instinctive for most of us that we see a set of 300 textbooks and we automatically think that costs more. And it was quite enlightening to find out it really doesn't. Thank you.
Mrs. Holtz.
Does the copyright allow you, when you download something to your device, can you also print it out?
Yeah, there are PDF printouts for it if needed.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next information item is the ACT/SAT Report for 2017 Graduates. Welcome.
Good evening, School Board Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, board members. Good evening, School Board Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, Board members, and Dr. Spence. My name is Doug Wren, and I am the Educational Measurement and Assessment Specialist with the Department of Teaching and Learning. This evening I will present an overview of ACT and SAT results for graduates in the class of 2017, including how our schools continue to improve the performance of our students on these two college entrance exams. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to remind the board that both the ACT and the SAT provide information about students' readiness for college coursework, and both tests are accepted by all four-year college and university admissions offices. This presentation will focus mainly on the performance of students who took the ACT or SAT during high school and reported their intent to graduate during or at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. We will begin by making comparisons between the percent of Virginia Beach graduates who took the SAT and the percent who took the ACT. The graph shows that for both the class of 2016 and the class of 2017, well over half of our graduates took the SAT, while far fewer took the ACT. The SAT is traditionally more popular in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and the percent of SAT examines has remained above 60% for each graduating class since 2010. The decrease in Virginia Beach ACT examines was the first decline in ACT enrollment for a graduating class since the 1990s. However, it is important to note the number of 2017 graduates who took the ACT also decreased across the state and the nation. There was an across-the-board increase in the number of SAT examines in the class of 2017 at the Division, State, and National levels. This was in part due to the College Board's new SAT, which I will address later in this The range of scores on each ACT subject test is from 1 to 36. The Virginia Beach ACT mean scores for English, Mathematics, Reading, and Science for the graduating classes of 2016 and 2017 are shown on the slide. The mean scores for 2016 graduates are at the top of the light blue bars, and the mean scores of 2017 graduates are in the bold, are in bold above the royal blue bars. As you can see, the mean scores for the class of 2017 improved on all four subject tests from the previous year's scores. These were the highest ACT mean scores ever recorded for a Virginia Beach graduating class. The average of the four ACT subject test scores provides each student with an ACT composite score. This graph shows the ACT composite mean scores for 2016 and 2017 graduates in Virginia Beach, the state, and the nation. The Division mean scores are shown in blue, the overall state means are in red, the state public school means are in black, and the national mean scores are shown in green. The ACT composite mean scores increased from last year at every level. The Virginia Beach composite mean remained at two full points above the national mean, while the gap between Virginia Beach and ACT test takers in Virginia public schools increased from last year to seven tenths of a point. The ACT college readiness benchmarks are scores on the ACT subject tests that represent the level of achievement required for students to have about a 75% chance of obtaining a C or higher in corresponding credit-bearing first-year college courses. On each subject test, at least half of the Division's 2017 graduates who took the ACT, represented by the blue bars, met the benchmarks. These percentages were well above the national percentages shown at the top of the green bars. 79% of Virginia Beach ACT test takers met the benchmark in English, which was the same percentage for public school graduates across the Commonwealth, represented by the black Before we look at results from the SAT, let's go over recent changes to the College Board's flagship assessment. A few years ago, the College Board decided to completely revamp the SAT. The new SAT was rolled out in March 2016. Instead of three sections like the previous SAT, critical thinking, math, and writing, the new SAT includes an evidence-based reading and writing section and a math section. The previous SAT writing section was replaced by an optional essay section. Additionally, the College Board reduced the number of answer choices on multiple-choice questions from five to four and eliminated the so-called guessing penalty, in which more points were taken off for wrong answers than for not answering at all. Because of these revisions and the new SAT's emphasis on college and career readiness skills, valid comparisons between scores from the new and previous version of the SAT cannot be made. As mentioned previously, the new SAT includes two sections, evidence-based reading and writing and math. The minimum score on each SAT section is 200, and the maximum score is 800. The section scores are shown above each bar on the slide, with the Division mean scores at the top of the blue bars, the mean scores for Commonwealth public school graduates above the black bars, and the mean scores for the total group of SAT test takers above the green bars. Similar to this year's ACT results, Virginia Beach's mean scores exceeded the total group's mean scores and approached the state's means. College Board research indicates students with scores at or above a college and career readiness benchmark have a 75% chance of getting at least a C in a first semester credit-bearing college course in a related subject. As the graph shows, over four-fifths of Virginia Beach students who took the SAT and graduated in 2017 are likely to succeed in 100-level history, literature, social science, or writing classes in college, while over half will likely succeed in first-year college algebra, statistics, precalculus, or calculus courses. A comparison of test takers who met the benchmarks shows Virginia Beach had about the same percentage of college and career-ready graduates in both reading and writing and math as public school test takers statewide in the class of 2017. The mean scores of Virginia Beach graduates continue to surpass the mean scores of graduates from every other school division in Hampton Roads. Our graduates have the highest total SAT mean scores, as shown at the top of each bar, as well as the highest section mean scores year after year after year. Please note, in case you do plan to do the math, that the mean total scores shown at the top of each bar do not always equal the sum of the section mean scores. This is because the section scores are rounded to the nearest whole number. To ensure that our students are prepared for the ACT and SAT, the Department of Teaching and Learning continues to implement various initiatives at all secondary schools in Virginia Beach. The ACT standards are integrated into our middle and high school English, math, and science courses. This fall, we administered the PSAT 8-9 to all eighth graders for the third year in a row, and on October 11th, we offered the PSAT at no cost to all of our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students. Research indicates that students who take the PSAT multiple times do better on the SAT than students who take the PSAT only once or not at all. Two years ago, we implemented an online learning opportunity through Khan Academy for all 10th graders to take a personalized SAT course in their English 10 courses. During second semester, students will use their PSAT results from last month to complete an online course designed to strengthen their skills for the SAT. Furthermore, additional funding is provided to each school to create face-to-face opportunities for specific site-based improvement plans. This concludes the overview of the ACT and SAT results of graduates for the 2016-2017 school year. At this time, my colleagues and I will answer questions from the School Board.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Mrs. Rye.
Hi, thank you. It's just a comment to see, it's nice to see the ACT finally getting comparable attention in this division, and I think there's growing pains, because I, I am disappointed in those numbers. I do see we have some high schools with, with a much higher percentage than others, and I'd be happy, at the proper time, to speak to staff about maybe directing attention to those guidance departments to see what they're doing that the others aren't, because I still know that, you know, a, a student doesn't know until they take both tests which one they're going to do better on.
And there, there are several websites out there, as you're probably aware of, that will tell students, "Well, if you are not good in science, you're probably better off taking the SAT, because the ACT has a science." And if a student is trying to plan to get into a science program, they will probably want to take the ACT, but you're absolutely right about taking both tests.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next on our information agenda is the Advanced Placement Data.
That would be me again.
Oh.
That's why I didn't move.
Well, welcome, welcome again.
Um, thank you. Our next presentation summarizes the results of 2016-2017 Advanced Placement, or AP Program, for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The College Board's AP Program provides opportunities for high school students to take advanced coursework and earn college credit. AP courses are modeled on comparable college courses in a variety of subjects, including, but not limited to, English, Math, Science, Social Studies, Fine Arts, and World Languages. A rigorous college-level exam for every AP course is also available. These tests are scored by college and university faculty and experienced AP teachers. This presentation will focus on AP enrollment and AP exam participation in Virginia Beach schools, as well as AP exam performance at the Division, State, and National levels. During the 2016-2017 school year, 33 of the College Board's 37 available AP courses were offered by Virginia Beach schools. The total number of AP class enrollments in the Division was over 13,000, which was an increase of 2,000, I'm sorry, of 277 AP class enrollments from the previous school year. Many students take more than one AP class. The number of Virginia Beach students who were enrolled in at least one AP class during the 2016-2017 year was 7,022, approximately 200 more students than the year before. High school sophomores, juniors, and seniors make up the majority of AP enrollees. Last year, 42% of all 10th through 12th grade students across the Division took AP This graph compares the percentages of AP course enrollees with full student membership percentages by gender and ethnicity for our ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students. The light blue bars represent the AP enrollment percentages, and the dark blue bars represent the membership percentages. You can see how the percentage of AP course enrollees compares with the corresponding membership percentage by looking at the height of each bar for a given group. For example, male students made up 51% of the high school population in Virginia Beach, but males comprised only 43% of all Virginia Beach students who took an AP course last All AP exams are optional. Students enrolled in AP courses are not required to take the exam. In a few AP courses, such as Computer Science and World History, less than half of the course enrollees chose to take the exam. In other courses, such as Calculus and Latin, over 80% of the enrollees took the exam. Overall, about 72% of our students enrolled in an AP course took the corresponding exam. There were more than 9,600 AP exams administered in Virginia Beach schools last year. Many students take more than one AP exam. Over 5,200 students across the Division took at least one AP exam in 2016-2017. All AP exams are scored on a scale from 1 to 5, with 5 being the highest possible score. Most colleges and universities recognize qualifying AP scores during the admission process. These scores are also used for credit or course placement. Students with exceptional exam performance are honored by the College Board. 1,354 students in the Division were designated as 2017 AP Scholars for earning scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. In addition, 62 students received the prestigious title of National AP Scholar for having an average score of four or higher on eight or more AP exams. This graph shows the percentage of AP exams that receive, that receive scores of 3, 4, or 5 for public school students at the Division, State, and National levels. It should be noted that in general, mean scores of tests tend to decrease as the number of test takers in a sample increases. In many school divisions, only the top tier of students take AP exams. In Virginia Beach schools, our students are encouraged to take AP classes and exams. The number of students in our division who participate in the AP program far surpasses the number of AP participants in other Hampton Road school divisions. As shown in the graph, there were more students in Virginia Beach who took at least one AP exam in 2016-2017 than the total number of AP examines in Newport News, Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Suffolk combined.
Wow.
This concludes the AP presentation. The AP Assessment Brief will be distributed to the School Board in December. The brief will include AP data that has been disaggregated by course and by high school. At this time, we will address further questions from the board.
Do we have any questions? Mrs. Malnick.
And to say that was jaw-dropping. That was amazing. I thought the results were fabulous. The 42% of our high schoolers are taking AP classes, and that was only 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Do we know the percentage of ninth graders taking AP classes? Because I think that's pretty high.
It's, it's relatively small for ninth graders generally, and, and I'm going to defer to Dr. Paul about that.
Like AP Human?
He's more familiar with that.
So the only course currently, this year, is the first year we've had a second course, but in the data that you've seen, the only course is AP Human that ninth graders take. However, this year, AP Computer Science Principles, this is our first year of, of having that, so that's another one that will grow in the future of having. We just want to have as many opportunities as possible for our students to have this level of rigor, and it also helps, it's a college credit if they see-
It's amazing. Excellent work. I mean, really amazing.
Any other questions?
I, I just have one. I'm, I'm, that was jaw-dropping. It was absolutely amazing. I was really impressed with that, with, with those results. But do we, have we made it absolutely clear to our students that when they enroll in the AP classes that, um, uh, we're, you know, sometimes, I know that sometimes students bite off more than they can chew, and they realize, "Oh, it's September, and I'm, I'm taking four class, four AP classes, and I'd like to drop one of them." Have we made it absolutely clear to them that we, we don't allow them to drop an AP class until the end of the first nine weeks? Is, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. Absolutely clear. If it's not, it is now, right? But can, any other questions?
Well, just, just quickly to that point, we did go back a year or two ago, and we made sure that that was absolutely clear in all of the pre-enrollment materials. It was in most schools, there were a couple of schools that wasn't as forward-facing as it could be. It is now, and I think that's probably indicative of why you haven't heard as much about that during this school year so far.
Right. Right. Ms. Malnick?
I will talk to you privately, because it's about, I was going to say something about my child, and he won't be very happy.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Paul. And thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wren. Next, we have information about the extension of current appointments to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Good evening, good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman Anderson and Vice Chairman Edwards and School Board members. I'm Valika Gatling. On behalf of the Special Education Advisory Committee, I'm requesting that the current members Donna Robel, Sandra Herman, and Cheryl Ward have their appointments extended until the end of the school year. Okay, do we have any questions? Ms. Manning?
Um, okay, I'm, it's only my first year on-
Okay. It's only my first year on the Board here. So how is it normally done? I understand that we normally reappoint, not extend. Why are we extending? That's my first question.
So I think the reason that we're extending is because we are in the process right now, as you know, with Policy 7-21. We had given us information on tonight, and so we are reworking all of our committees so that they are all under one umbrella and have the same type of guidelines.
So what current policy allows for extensions rather than reappointments? And this could be a Ms. Linetti question.
I'm not sure that it's a policy situation. What you have, your policy on the Special Education Advisory Committee vague. What they have a bylaw that gives them terms on there. You appoint whatever you determine to be appropriate. So SEAC has bylaws and terms. What we're going to be coming to, which is the last policy I'll be presenting, 7-21, is talking about changes in the structure of the committee, which will then require a lot of committees by July 1st to do something different than they have. So this situation, what they're looking to extend rather than do an extension or a reappointment for a time period, is that those positions or those time periods may not be appropriate after the...
Right. But does current policy or bylaw permit us to extend rather than reappoint currently?
You don't have a bylaw on that. You have a policy that says, you have to have a Special Education Advisory Committee. They have bylaws that set terms for them. But there's no policy that deals with how long you appoint them for a certain period. You can choose to extend that appointment. You can allow their appointment to run out, whatever you want to do. But there's a law that applies to you. A policy that applies.
So this would be in lieu of no policy, correct?
You don't have a policy that specifically deals with the point, how long you appoint them. You chose...you pointed them for a certain period. That was an action you took when their first term came in. You can now extend that appointment, or you can...
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I'm all for these three wonderful volunteers that have stepped up to serve once again. We've got one in the audience. Ms. Robel, thank you for all your hard work. I'm sorry for the miscommunication or not enough information, because I was asked by a SEAC member, you know, what does that mean? Extended for how long? And so, you know, this Board voted two weeks ago to kind of stop a process midway, which I think was a big mistake, and therefore we left SEAC nominees kind of in la-la land. And so I apologize for that. But hopefully, we can get this all straight. And again, the extension is obviously not a full term, because we're already in basically December, and the end of the school year is June. So, but again, I just want to say thank you for the SEAC members, and I completely support these three. I know that they do a good job. And I'm sorry that we stopped a process that really kind of goofed up things. But all said, thank you. And I'll be looking forward to some conversation when we talk about this new policy, definitely.
And how long are we appointing them for? I mean, extending them for?
To the end of the school year.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Riggs?
I don't have a question. I just have a statement. I'm on the Policy Committee, and that is what we are going to do. We are going...we are coming forth with the policy that is going to have the information for this. And because we did not have the policy that sets specific guidelines, we felt like this needed to be done. So we will be talking about that tonight. So yes, we are straightening that out. And thank you for bringing the three names to us.
Thank you. Thank you. The Internal Financial Statement for October 2017 is next on the information part of the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Chairman. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Anderson, Vice Chairman Edwards, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. As of October 31st, this first graph illustrates that our overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. As mentioned last month's Board meeting, we're currently projecting a slightly higher March 31st ADM over what we budgeted for, resulting in a really small surplus of about $100,000. The second graph we have, the sales tax receipts remain on an acceptable trend, as illustrated in this graph. We're pretty much in line for the last two fiscal years. Year-to-date, we were about $96,000 through October 31st over last year. We are seeing in November about a $260,000 increase over November of last year, and that reflected in the statements next month. And then our final graph also shows the expenditures and encumbrances trend, and we do remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. I'd be glad to answer any questions the Board may have.
Do we have any questions from the Board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our final information items are the Policy Review Committee recommendations. Welcome, Mrs. Linetti.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Kami Linetti, School Board Legal Counsel. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'm going to be presenting recommendations concerning various policies for you. Interesting, the first one up is actually not a policy. It is the Internal Audit Charter. For those who are not familiar with what we have in Virginia Beach, we have Internal Audit, Office of Internal Audit. They have a charter that was created on there. To look at some of the issues involving the charter and some of the policies involving the Internal Audit Committee, the Audit Committee looked at what the current policy was. It looked at the charter, and it looked at some of our policies, and they realized that some of the things in there were not how we are actually practicing. There weren't significant changes, but they were out of date from when the charter was initially approved. The last amendment to the charter was in 2011. So at the recommendation of the internal auditor, as well as the Audit Committee, we made some minor changes to that. So what you see first up is your Internal Audit Charter. There are not really significant changes. The name of the office has changed, and certain minor procedures have been changed for that, and how the internal auditor does the audits for you. So there are minor changes in that one. What we did change, however, I'm sorry, on Policy 396, before the internal...we had a policy that had to do with audits in general on there, and it doesn't really reflect what we were doing with the Audit Committee. So at the recommendation, the internal audit, we created a separate policy. We took part of a prior policy and actually made its own policy. So what you're going to be doing is adopting a Policy 396 that specifically has to do with the Office of Internal Audit and the Audit Committee. It just lays out the actual procedures. There really isn't any significant difference. We just felt it was more appropriate to create it as its own policy. Then we also have link to this policy, Internal Audit Charter. You do have to make the...the School Board does have to approve the changes to the Audit Charter. Then we ask you to adopt Policy 396, which just establishes the Internal Office of Internal Audit and the Audit Committee as a separate policy. That takes you back to Policy 346, and this is what was originally placed. It said audits, Audit Committee, and Internal Audit Charter. We made a couple minor scrivener changes to that. If you'll see on the second page, the sections that you see in the policy we just presented on 396, which would be Section G and Section H, are now becoming Policy 396. Aren't significant changes. We just moved them over. Really, the audits that you see in 346 have to do with general auditing procedures that we do in our Finance Department. They weren't as relevant to what the Internal Audit Office does or the Audit Committee does, although those are things we will look over. So we do an amendment to 346 that reflects removing the last two sections, G and H, and making them into Policy 396. Moves on to Policy 248. Policy 248 will now be known as salaries and compensation. We took out conditions of employment separately on there. We amend the title. We're changing some of the definitions, because the definitions are now being moved to Policy 475. I have been moved to them. And also, we've got the Compensation Plan. We put the Compensation Plan as a section, a different section. So what you're seeing are removal of those portions of policies that now appear in a different policy. We've also made some changes, background requirements and conditions of employment, because that appears in a separate policy. So significantly, what you're having in here is just that there will provide salary and benefits, and that you refer to the Compensation Plan as the document that reflects what your salaries and compensation are for employees. Policy 443 is personal protection from sexual harassment. Let me make it very clear, we're not getting rid of protection for sexual harassment. We have previously, in 2014, made changes to our nondiscrimination policies. We incorporate a lot of this information into separate policies and regulation having to do with sexual harassment procedures. We are required by federal law to have a specific procedure in sexual assault, sexual harassment, sexual discrimination. We have that. We also have our nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policies that incorporate this. We felt this was just duplicative. So we're going to move to delete Policy 443. And again, those protections are already incorporated into other policies. On Policy 477, this was bus drivers and driver assistance. We've gone...recommend deleting this policy. This appears in definitions elsewhere in other policies. Same thing with Policy 476, having classified personnel teacher assistance. These definitions have been incorporated into separate policies already. And 475, same thing. Same thing. We're changing the title on this one, classified personnel. We are actually making this the policy. It has to do with conditions of employment. So what you would have saw two policies earlier on our conditions of employment are now found in one particular policy. This will talk about the general qualifications. It will define what a licensed employee is. It also defines substitute employees, contracts for employment notification. It separates out coaching contracts. So these all now appear in one location instead of multiple policies and regulations. Again, in subsection G, we'll talk about conditions of work. And then we've amended some of the sections on background changes. These are not significant changes. We've just consolidated them into one policy, so instead of being a separate policy. What we have gone in and added is on subsection G, on probationary periods. Probationary periods appeared in different areas. These are important for us when we're dealing with contract rights and other benefits that apply to certain individuals on there. That's now been incorporated into subsection J. And then just explanation on what their...the fact that you now have the ability to extend probationary periods. So while it looks like a significant amount of changes, what we've really done is consolidated into one particular policy, those general conditions of employment from other policies. Looking at Policy 490, substitute employees, we are repealing...moving to repeal all of 490, because these definitions now appear under the general definition policy in 475. 492 is summer teachers. We are mending the title for this to be summer teachers' assignment on this one, just to clarify where...before, it had to do with a couple of their assignments and placements. We're just generally changing a little bit of the definition in there, talking about what qualifies as a summer teacher. There are not really significant changes in here, just consolidating it. 493 is employment temporary part-time employees. Again, we're deleting Section Number 1, because that now appears in Policy 41. We're deleting Section Number 2, because it now appears in Policy 250. So we will be...I'm sorry, we will be deleting all this, because again, we consolidated all the definitions into separate policies. Also, this is Policy 494, having to do with exchange teachers. This is a program we had early in the 90s. We've not had a program, I think, in the 20 years that I've been here. This is not a program we have on there. Not that we don't hire foreign teachers. We do that under a different procedure, but just exchanging teachers for temporary periods in the school year. We don't have that program anymore. So we're going to be moving to repeal Policy 494. Policy 495, census agents. Apparently, we used to pay people to do this. Now, this is simply incorporated into duties that we have. It's no longer to need to separate this or to hire specific people. So we will be moving to repeal Policy 495. Policy 683 has to do with...let me...private educational courses on here. In the past, we've had...we had a policy that you had pulled out called correspondence courses. We've moved to repeal that. We've realized with time that there are courses that individuals take that are...can be correspondence or some type of private courses. We have had situations where individual students have taken courses outside of the normal curriculum, something their family wanted them to take. On occasion, there is a course where we simply cannot provide that, and there are not a significant number of students for us to actually create a class for that. Those type of situations, we pay for. But there are times when parents go ahead and pay for a student to take a separate course with another organization. A lot of online courses are available. We realized we weren't very clear with parents when we would accept credit for it, when we would be responsible for it. This becomes an issue for us in a digital age, where more and more parents can access these courses. So this policy is making it clear that we need to get authorization from them before we will go ahead and credit them. We'll talk about how we give credit for them on there. But it also clarifies that if you are putting your child into one of these classes, that you are going to be responsible for them. Unless we have agreed as a school division to pay for this course, because we cannot otherwise provide it, you are going to be responsible for that. So you can't simply sign up for an online course and have us be responsible for that. We have determined it's appropriate with our curriculum, and that's something we're sponsoring. Otherwise, it's something the family's responsible for. So again, that's a change. So we will be moving to adopt Policy 683, and we're going to call that, instead of private course, will be sponsored, Educational Courses. Which brings me to the added policy on here. Now, let me start off by explaining, the public may not have all this, partially because we were rewriting it as of last night. Policy 721 has to do with citizens advisory committees. Pursuant to some conversations we've had at the last School Board meeting, there was some concern about how we go ahead and appoint citizens to committees and the process for that. And there, we were tasked with the members of the School Administration, also the PRC, to look at what policies we had there and deal with that. You have had Policy 721 having to do with citizens advisory committees on there, but it was a little bit vague as to what we were doing. When we look back, I worked with the School Administration and Super Tenants Office, and we went back and looked, and we realized what qualifies as a citizens advisory committee is those committees in which you, as a School Board, appointed citizens to it. They're not always citizens. We have a combination...not all citizens. We have a combination of citizens, various community corporations, and staff members on these. Specifically looking at, we determined that you have the following committees that we're going to be referring to as citizens advisory committees. And this appears in the new Section B in this area. You have the Special Education Advisory Committee. This is required by state law. The Technical and Career Education Advisory Committee, you've had this...you've had a council on this that's dealt with it. After some discussion with various School Board members and the PRC, we felt it was time to elevate that with our new focuses on the technical career education, to elevate that to an equal status to SEAC or to the Gifted Advisory Committee. So we're now going to change that actually into a committee. The Gifted Education Advisor Committee, also required by state law on there. You have an interagency Adult Basic Education Advisory Committee that is run by the Director of Adult Basic Education on there. You have the School Health Advisory Committee. The last time you saw that was a few months ago, when we were required to mend some of it having to do with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act and some of the requirements that we have to verify for the state and for the federal government on health matters. We have that committee. We are now formalizing that as a citizens advisory committee. You have ad hoc strategic plan committee. Pursuant to your policy, one year before the expiration of strategic plan, you were to convene a citizens committee to start working on the strategic plan. So that particular committee only comes into effect one year before the end of a strategic plan, or if you find it necessary. And then I add a subsection, should there be times that you need other committees, the School Board will then determine a committee on that. So what you have, and we have not gotten this into the policy yet, is you have a series of committees, councils, and boards. We've decided to call them all citizens advisory committees. At this time, these are the six committees that we are going to designate as citizens advisory committees. After that, I took into consideration some of the discussions you had in workshop before, some of the discussions we had at PRC, some of the other discussions that individual School Board members have, as opposed to as to how you get citizens appointed to committees. Now, I recognize that each one of these committees, their councils or boards that you have, they have different rules and regulations. They have different membership on them. So we are not at a point yet where we have been able to make that standard. We've looked at them. I've pulled all the policies and regulations. I've pulled the bylaws for them. And we realize that there are different groups. And one thing you'll notice with certain groups, obviously, they have different needs. Special Education Advisory Committee is going to focus on students with disabilities, persons with disabilities on there. Technical Career Education is going to be looking at needs of students, but also industry needs on there. So the membership is not going to be the same. We need to work through some of those issues. Both Special Education Advisory Committee and the Gifted Advisory Committee have established bylaws that we're looking at. So, once we work with this policy, I am also going to have to go back to these particular organizations. I'm going to have to say to them, you need to make sure your bylaws are in conformance with whatever we're going to do with the policy. After looking at these groups on this one, what I did was take your policies and regulations having to do with these particular groups, and we're now going to change them into regulations that will fall under this Policy 721. So the first proposal will be, you'll see, Special Education Advisory Committee will become Regulation 721.1, and then we'll standardize some of the information. You don't have that in front of you, and actually, you will not be...if they become regulations, they will not be something that you, as a School Board, approve. What I do would be, then we would standardize them all in one place on there. Next thing we talked about were applications and appointment for citizens advisory committee. This is the largest section. I have looked at some of the different policies. I have looked at what other school divisions have put in there. And we did a draft yesterday after...run it before the Policy Review Committee yesterday. Some other things came out. Part of it, we didn't feel was clear enough. Some of the issues, we weren't sure we had thought through enough. So this is the draft we're bringing to you. It is not a final product. This is my best draft at this point. And again, we were rewriting it as of this morning. What you... What you need to do next couple of weeks is take a look at it, get back to the policy review committee members and let them know what you think needs to be changed. So I'm going to go step by step through this, give you some ideas and some of the things we're thinking. If you think something else needs to be done, please let me know. Once we get this policy done, I will then correct the regulations that are after that. And then I will go back out to the committees, councils and boards and inform them how they're going to do that and what we think they need to do with their bylaw. So, one of the things we're doing is looking at this, the changes here will not be in effect until July 1st because it's going to take a little while for these committees to get it in and get some of this stuff, get some of this information through. It will also take us a while to get the regulations in shape. I can get this probably done in a month or two, but I need PRC to look at that and I need the rest of you to look at. So first, under your applications, we said, beginning in 2018, this is the difference. The school board, in cooperation with the superintendent, will receive applications for prospective citizen candidate to serve as members on the citizens advisory committee. That's a significant change because your procedure, most of these committees right now is that the committee itself goes out, obtains applications, screens the applications and brings those to you. Not every one of these committees brings them to you, but as of, as of the adoption of this policy, the citizens will come before you. The change here is that the school board is going to be accepting them. They will have to bring all applications to you. Now, how you handle that is something we do need to talk about. We talked a little bit about that in the PRC on there. And then, we will allow the advisory committees until May 1st to get their bylaws or any procedures they have into compliance with their policies and regulations you have out. And the reason we're going with July 1st, or May 1st, is that if you then have to appoint any new positions that will go into effect on July 1, you will need at least the month of June to look at them. You'll probably have to go into information. You'll have to go to action. So we wanted to back it up so May, the bylaws would be in compliance and that you would then get them the following month to look at. One of, the first thing we put out there was citizen candidates should represent a broad cross-section of the community. And then, when consistent with the purpose of the committee, the citizen member should be appointed from different sections of the city, such as high school zones or feeder section to high schools. And citizens advisory committees may be require, may require that certain members be residents of school zones. Some of your committees require that you come from certain feeder zones, some don't. That is something we'll look at at the PRC. If you have some ideas on that, please let us know on there. But right now, that is not standard between our committees. So our suggestion was that if it's, if the committee views it as necessary, that that be something adopted in there. And there are times when that's appropriate, but other committees, that may not be appropriate to have residency requirements. We're also going to require that citizen candidates be residents of the city of Virginia Beach. And if they are no longer residents during their appointment, they will lose their position on whatever committee they're appointed to, and then you will fill that with another appropriately qualified candidate. Number three, as soon as we're appointed, fill, the committee members, appointed, fill positions that represent related government bodies, agencies, service organization, businesses do not need to be residents. Many of your committees do have corporation members on there. So if you're representing a corporation, I know CAC has that, I know our technical advisory committee has that. You may be an employer in office in that corporation. You are relevant to that committee. Your residency is not relevant to your appointment. Also, we've suggested that candidates must demonstrate an interest in public school education, the willingness to work with committee members, school division staff, school board to address the needs of the Virginia Beach City Public School students, staff and the school division. And section four. Section five is candidates need, must demonstrate specific experience or qualifications if membership on a committee requires such. Some of the committee members do require specific qualifications on there. And if that's necessary for the committee, then that person will have to then indicate that on their application. I have put in there that persons who have been convicted of felonies, crimes of moral turpitude, misdemeanor crimes that set forth in Virginia Code 22.1296.1 are as amended, or have found and complaints of child abuse are not going to be eligible to serve as citizen members. Anyone who has a pending investigation or unresolved claims is not eligible for consideration as a candidate until those matters are resolved. And then I've also suggested the superintendent will be responsible for developing procedures to verify that information. We'll have to do background checks on that. I put in section seven, that school board reserves the right to appoint candidates who the school board determines best meet the needs of citizens advisory committees and the school division at the time of important appointment. I think that's appropriate for you to make that final decision as to who you determines And number eight is, to the extent the committee membership requirements or conditions, sorry, extent consistent with committee membership or requirements, the school board will not discriminate. And I've listed out the categories which appear in your nondiscrimination clause. While we, there might be equally qualified candidates on there, there might be certain qualifications. If you have to be the parent or a person with a disability to serve on a committee on there, that may outweigh the fact that you may have another protected class. I wanted to preserve that right because certain committees require certain qualifications on there. But your general nondiscrimination clause. Number nine is a section that already appears in this policy. School board members shall not serve on citizens advisory committees except for those committees that have strategic planning purposes. So you will not be members of those committees. You do currently serve sometimes as liaison, but you are not a voting member of those committees other than your strategic planning committee. I put in number 10, that the superintendent or designated will appoint school division staff or student representatives to committees with such membership positions. Almost all of your committees do have staff membership positions. Some of them have student membership positions on there. That's something we're proposing that come before the school board. We're going to allow the superintendent, her staff, his staff to determine what's appropriate for those positions. Number 11 is something that did not come fully before the policy review committee yesterday. After some discussions, we, yesterday, we weren't clear as to how we were going to handle applications and some of those issues. So this was something I proposed last night. Most of the PRC members saw this for the first time this morning. We're going to designate that the superintendent will be responsible for the procedures for notice, ring recruitment of citizen candidates and obtaining and presenting citizen committee candidates to the school board for review. While that seems like a minor matter, obviously, you're going to need to know when a committee position's open, what the qualifications are. You're going to need to give notice to the public. You're going to have to have somewhere to get the vetting information in there. This is something we need to think about, how you want to do that. My suggestion was that we allow the superintendent to develop procedures for this. Currently, most of your committees come forward with the recommendations themselves on there. My suggestion was to allow the superintendent to do this, however you want to consider a different way to do that. That certainly can be done. My only concern would be understanding the administrative burden that this may create doing that. So the first subsection, that would be notice and qualification of citizen committee member positions that become open due to expiration of a term or vacancy or addition of a new position will be made known to the public no less than 30 calendar days before the final date for application. So this is not something we necessarily do right now. The committees generally handle this, but this would be a matter the school board would designate, that the superintendent now make it known to the public that this position, let's say it's special education advisory committee, has a position member. Let's say Greenmount High School Zone, we're looking for a position member. You would have 30 days. That information would be out there and all applicants would know about that. Superintendent, as well as current committee members, will develop procedures for recruitment of qualified candidates who represent a broad cross-section of the community. I know that was an ongoing concern we had, that there be a broad cross-section and not just certain, and areas or certain, certain people in the city continue to get appointed. So this would be something we would look for, how to better recruit the cross-section that you're looking for. Number, letter C, committees to which a candidate seeks appointment will be allowed to present information to the school board for consideration concerning the qualification candidate for service on the committee, including information concerning candidates for reappointment. Many times, we do see people come back for reappointment. Some of these committees have requirements for attendance matters, or if an individual is appointed to a committee and they don't show up or regularly participate in the committee, that might be information you need to know. So we wanted a procedure for that. And then, number D, all candidates for citizen, citizen committee members will be presented to the school board for consideration no later than 14 calendar days before a school board meeting at which the candidate will be considered on there. We're also going to allow you to go into closed session to discuss the qualifications of the committee member. In this case, the committee member will be treated like an employee and there are protections under the Freedom of Information Act. Allow us to go in to talk about qualifications for that. This would simply be codifying that. Candidates the school board choose for appointment will then be presented to the, on the information agenda, information agenda for consideration and acceptance of public comments before being placed on the consent agenda or the action agenda. We weren't 100% clear how best to do this. My suggestion was to at least give notice, once you've decided who you want to put forward, that the public would then have an opportunity to know who you're going to point and that you would give 14 days for them to do it. That's your normal process between your information, your agenda and your action agenda. We just wanted to codify that. What we also put in there were terms of service where citizen members should begin on July 1st and terminate on July 30th. Not all your committees function the same way, so this would then standardize it. We're not proposing that all committees be reappointed as of July 1st of this year. It's simply that the terms on July 1st through June, June 30th of every year. We will allow, my suggestion would be to allow those persons who are currently serving terms to maintain them until their new appointments come up. And applications for citizen committee members should be presented to the school board for consideration no later than May 15th prior to the expiration of a term. Again, this was something the committee did discuss. We originally thought about June on there, but realized you have a lot going on in June with graduation. You'll still have a lot going on in May. All these have to be pointed before July 1st. You are going to need some time to go through them. Hopefully, you're not seeing a lot at one time, but theoretically, you could be seeing many applications. We want to give you adequate time to do that. At that point, there's some minor changes we talked about. Then one of the discussions was that it's important for the school board to know the work of the committees. Some of your committees do, are required by state law to provide annual reports. You do see those. Other committees, you don't actually see this. Sometimes you see the minutes. So the suggestion in subsection D would that all, all committees have to have annual reports to the school board. And then talking on tenure in subsection F on there, while each person is appointed for a specific period of time, usually a two to three-year period, we want to make it clear that you have the right as a school board to remove somebody at any time on there. And the suggestions were, for reasons sort of, could be failure to perform duties, failure to maintain qualifications, failure to attend meetings, disruptive or inappropriate behavior other good and just cause, and that a committee member who's removed does not have a right to grieve that or challenge that. I felt that was important for you, for the right, if you find it necessary to remove an individual from a committee. At this time, those are my suggestions as the overall umbrella policy. If you approve this policy, we make amendments to that. The next step would then be to take the regulations, take all these committees, to extent possible, standardize our regulations so that we know what's in there. That would be an opportunity for us to look at committee membership. And then I will then go back to those committees that have bylaws and we will work with them to amend their bylaws. So hopefully, everyone has both the policies, the regulations, the bylaws up to date by May 1st, and then the new applications coming in will come to you by May 15th. At that point, you'll be responsible for looking at all the applications. That again, is our first draft on this one. We know there are some things that are not resolved, but now would either be a good time to discuss this or to get, to get comments back to the policy review committee.
Any questions, concerns? Ms. Weems?
Well, first, I want to thank Ms. Rye, because I did, I was disappointed that it wasn't on your, the agenda for y'all's meeting last time. And I think Ms. Rye called a special meeting to go over this because I thought that the sooner the better. So I appreciate that and for the policy committee meeting. I have so many concerns with this.
Bring mine.
First of all, just, I mean, the gifted advisory committee, and I'm just going to bring out two that I have closer contact with, and the special education advisory committee. They are volunteers. They are community members in our community who have children that are gifted and have children that have special needs. I respect their input. I think that they do a wonderful job about stepping, stepping up and looking at all sides of the equation. They are the experts in the field and in the trenches. I think this four-page, 20-item policy or draft has pretty much taken that away from these committees. I think it's taken everything away from them to go recruit and know, they know who they need on the committee. They, they, they have their bylaws. And I think it's pretty much putting it all on the superintendent and on us, and I don't think that's right. So generally speaking, I have an issue with the whole document. I don't know if I want to go through this. I'm not going to take everybody's time, but, I mean, I really think that this just, to me, this makes sure that, that the 11 of us sitting here and the superintendent gets a person on these committees who we want, who is like-minded for various reasons. And this all came about, and we know why it all came about. And I don't want to be a part of that. I want individuals to come. I don't want, want school board members, I mean, like this one thing is, you can terminate them for failure of duties, which the, the committee, I mean, I would imagine if CAC has somebody on their committee who never attends a meeting, they're not going to, you know, come to us to ask for them. But for inappropriate behavior, well, inappropriate behavior, and Ms. Holtz might think inappropriate behavior is different than what I think is inappropriate behavior.
That's true.
Or, that is so true. Or good and just reason. I mean, basically, the saying, I mean, we might say somebody is affiliated with a political party that we don't agree with, or somebody said something at some time, or somebody's in an association that we don't agree with. I mean, this is just pretty much, I don't agree with hardly any of it. There's 20 items and I'm going to write, I will go through each one because I'm not going to take the time to go back. I think it just gives us way too much power for six people to get together. And it even says in one case, I guess if we don't like who they bring to us, we, the six of y'all can pick somebody who you know, or I can pick my neighbor and appoint them because now the school board has all the, you know, the power and ability. I think this takes community input all to a low level. And I don't agree with it. And I will write down comments on all 20. I agree with about 10 of them, but about 10 of them I don't agree with. So, so you will be getting emails from me, Kami. I appreciate the hard work, but I think the way this came about was wrong. I think the time that we're doing it is wrong. And I think it's, it's grossly unfair to our volunteers who want to serve in the community. And it's putting all the power with us instead of the community.
I would suggest that you direct all your comments also to the policy committee as well.
I will send them all.
Ms. Rye?
Okay, so I certainly appreciate the feedback. I do want to reiterate that, you know, the policy committee's been in place for over, for close to two years now. And often, when we approach a single policy, it leads to a broader issue. And this is a perfect example where technical and career ed kind of came up on the list six months ago, and then it wound up kind of deferred. And it evolved into, well, we have all these other advisory committees and just like we merged and consolidated curriculum policies, for example, to clean things up. And that's where we were at with that. I think with some of the concerns, certainly when it comes to like committee members not stepping up, I think certainly for me, we're, we're looking for the opportunity for a committee member who suddenly doesn't start showing up for things. I don't think the, I mean, I can speak for myself that the intent of that is not to start, you know, questioning motives of committee members once they're appointed, but we want to have mechanisms in place for accountability. And often, a committee chair may feel her hands or his hands are tied. What do I do with this member who's not stepping up and being accountable? Because, you know, they're serving in a, in a capacity that others may wish to serve in. So I just want, but I do certainly, as Kami said, even as committee, the committees, some of this we saw for the first time today. And we do welcome written comments. We're trying, I'm trying as the committee chair to, to honor a lot of, a lot of interests. Yes, we want to accelerate the process, but I don't want to, we don't want to compromise quality. We want to do it the right way. So that's all I'll say at this point.
Ms. Manning?
I have many problems as well with this policy, and I'm not going to go in detail of all of them right now, but some that I want to highlight. This is a citizens advisory committee. I don't think it's fair to involve the superintendent in this and burden him with something else to do, nor do I think it is right because it's a citizens advisory committee. It's supposed to be the citizens advising the school board. So I think, that's my first point. And we don't have time to have all of these applications coming to us. I think that perhaps we should have the right to review all of the applications, but I still think that it should be up to the committees to recommend who they best see fit to serve on the committee, and perhaps that can be done through the committee chair. You know, I think a lot, much of this is very subjective. For example, number four, candidates must demonstrate an interest in public school education. So if we have a pediatrician that wants to serve on our school health advisory committee who sends all their children to private school, they're not going to be accepted on this committee. So I can see lots of instances where this language is in here is very subjective. And I believe, Ms. Lanetti, you said that none of this will go into effect until July 1st, correct?
Technically, the policy would go into effect, which would then set the motion that everybody else would adjust policies and procedures, and then the first appointment should be showing up for you in effect of July 1st. It would go in. So policy would need to go into effect to, for everything else to set in, but then everybody else would adjust their procedures for their committees, for their bylaws. And then I would expect to see, unless there's a vacancy, you would be seeing the first people appointed under these rules for terms that will begin on July 1.
So currently, we have an open seat in the gifted advisory committee, and so we can't, we can't fill that seat, and...
Well, well, I'm going to give you is, the question is, that's a vacancy you have right now, and these are for positions to begin in July 1.
Right.
So you could still, if you wanted to, work under whatever procedures you have for currently pending individuals. Anything, I think the effect would be, any applications coming to you for a term to begin on July 1st would then follow these procedures.
Okay, so we have to come up with a way to appoint the gifted advisory committee member so that they're not down a member and get past the political differences on, you know, who should and should not be appointed to that committee.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Rye?
Yes, I will make a comment about a short discussion that already took place about some of the processes, the option of making them regulations versus policy, and the reason that the committee, it does appear on surface to be a longer policy, but it's precisely so that these provisions ultimately are approved by the school board and have, so I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Edwards?
The advisory committees are important. In fact, the inconsistency in how they operated and how they reported or didn't report and the differences in processes for soliciting and getting appointees was bothersome at best. And that's why, again, it was like six, eight months ago, the CTE thing had come up, and that's kind of what put it on the scope. But they're important. There's, you know, they're very important, and this is an effort to eliminate inconsistencies and sloppiness in how it's transpired between all of these committees. And to the extent that they can be brought into consistency, they will be. There are some that require more professional and less citizen input, and others, by definition of the mission of the committees. And the policy committee is trying, will be dealing with that, as of all the regs when they're flushed out subsequent to the policy. But nobody should take away from what we're doing here as any effort to denigrate the importance of, and we have always appointed most of them, but there were some that we didn't appoint, and that's why I said, well, why do we appoint the, this committee and not that committee? Well, nobody had an answer. So we're trying to deal with that and fix it. And it's, there's no intent, at least on my part, and I believe most of my colleagues, to politicize this at all. It's just to try to get it right from a process standpoint. Yes, there are communication issues and reappointments or extensions that are, at this point, regrettable, and it's kind of like road construction. I mean, the end product is going to be a smoother road that goes in the right directions, and the traffic will flow better. But in the meantime, we've got some disruption in the process, and, you know, it's regrettable, but it is what it is.
All right. Any other comments? Ms. Weems?
Did you have something, Sol? Sorry. Are you sure? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I completely agree with some basic consistency, but it's hard to make consistency when all of these have such different missions. I mean, their goal is to make Virginia Beach Public Schools better, but as Mr. Edwards said, they have completely different areas of expertise and missions. So, like I said, I believe in about half of it, but half of it is just way too subjective. And Ms. Rye, can I ask you a question? Did you ever, did your committee ever consider, like, having liaisons to these, like official liaisons? I know city council works under that, where they would have a, you know, we would have a liaison to the gifted and a liaison to special ed. I know I brought this up years ago to Mr. Edwards, but it didn't really go anywhere, and I forgot what the reason was. But, so that that person actually goes to all the meetings instead of one of us just hit a meeting when we can. Did y'all discuss that?
Do you have a, Mr. Edwards, do you want to speak to that?
It did come up sometime back, and I believe at least, I think both gifted and the special education, it's a, Virginia, it's either, I don't think it's law, I think it's a state regulation that requires that the committee report through the superintendent to the board, in that the placement of a liaison would sort of potentially leave the superintendent out of the loop which is directed by the state.
Well, the way, I talked to four city council members, and the liaison would not take away any of that. They would be, like, if I was with the special education, I would just be there so if anybody had any questions about, you know, did they go through the process, or what were they talking about this? But it wouldn't take away that process. It would just make sure that one of us were at these important meetings. So if you would just kind of consider that.
To answer your specific question, it was not specifically discussed in this round.
Would y'all look at that in round two, please? Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. I think there is a positive move here to standardize process. I think that putting some of division resources behind recruiting hopefully opens up and more publicly announces these openings, and hopefully there are more applications, and I think that's positive. I think having the school board review applications is a positive. From that point, I'm not sure what the process should be, and I take Mrs. Weems' point that these committees do know what they're looking for, and so I'd like to think of ways of having them choose who ultimately will be the nominee, but after some sort of school board review. So I'm going to be thinking about that as well. I think that's a good point. But I think this is a good starting point for something that I have felt has been a little loose in process, and something that months ago came up, and then, you know, at our two meetings ago was an issue. But I think this is a good starting point. I think if we all think about it a little bit more and work on it, I think we can find a good middle ground in improving, and yet ensuring that we maintain that level of respect that we have for the work of the committees.
So I just want to be clear. I don't think we have to vote on this next time. We can defer this until a later meeting. Is that correct?
We will, the problem we're going to have is the PRC is going to need to look at it again. And as I've mentioned, if we get a general umbrella policy for it, then we, and I've taken a first stab at regulations for each one of these committees. I do think, although regulations are not something the school board normally approves, I think they need to see them to see where we're going to be going with them so they're agreeable with it, which is also a good time to look at things like liaisons and membership on there. We have pulled all that information. The PRC did not have time to look at that yesterday, and so I think those are things that we can look at. I think the PRC is going to need to see that again. So they either will have to call a meeting out of their normal order, because I believe the next meeting is December 14th, or we bring it up at December 14th, and we'd bring it on for the school board after that. There are a lot of moving parts. As I always mention to the PRC, when I started looking at it, I realized we had to look at bylaws, we had to look at committee things, I had to check the laws and what we can and can't do. So overall, this is a first draft. It was actually a second draft. It looks a little different than we did yesterday. One of the things I would tell you to look at, if you have not seen the gifted advisory or the special education bylaws, I do have copies of them, they actually have nominating processes for these things. Some of the things, talking about how you remove a member, are also part of their bylaws on that. There are ways to do it and use the same processes for it and look at it, so those are different things. If you would like some background information on that, or if you would like to see where the laws are relevant to some of these organizations, please let me know, and I'll go ahead and forward that to you. There are a lot of moving parts. This is an enormous task for this. So this is a first draft the PRC came with to see if we could get something standardized to do that, but we still need to look at the individual committees themselves to make sure that they're meeting the requirements that you're looking for.
Okay. So, and when is the next PRC scheduled meeting?
December 14th.
December 14th. So, and our next school board meeting is...
December 6th.
I mean, December...
5th.
December 5th. So it doesn't look like we're ready to have this on the agenda for next time.
No, but I think the PRC could be looking at and working behind, so it would really help if you would send your comments into Mrs. Rye, and it's, so they can look at it. There are things we haven't considered, please let me know, then we could start drafting that. I can get that information to the PRC to look at. Again, there's a lot of information for them to consider, so the more you give us ahead of time, the easier it will be for us to give you a better draft of what's coming out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any standing committee reports this evening? Ms. Weems?
Yes, I attended the Green Run Collegiate, and they're having an event coming up that I hope we can all go see, and it's a auditorium presented by the artist Wayne White. And Wayne White is an artist illustrator and puppeteer, and he's actually from Chattanooga, Tennessee, and I'm going there tomorrow. So that was fun to know. But anyway, he's got a auditorium at Moca, and it's exploring the unique historical events in Hampton Roads. So Green Run Collegiate and Green Run High School kind of piggybacked, and he came to the school and taught them, you know, the way that he does the art and everything, and they've got monument-sized puppets and figures, and what they have done is they have explored the history of Green Run. And so it will be presented at Moca now until February 11th, and it is just unbelievable. In fact, they have a puppet of Dr. Spence, because he is very historical, of course, at Green Run. And I wanted to tell Dr. Spence, we think he's, you know, kind of big of stature, stature, but when you go to Moca, Dr. Spence is 93 inches high and 173 inches wide. So we all need to go out there and get our pictures with Dr. Spence. But it's a great event, and the kids were so excited about it.
I guess that's with ours.
Yeah, yeah. And so I want us all to get out there and take your selfies with Dr. Spence and post those babies. And also, and I just got an email today, I think ODS also had elementary, I think we got that today, and I think that they have done something also with this project. So now, between February 11th, we want everybody to go out there. I can't wait.
Is there admission?
Admission? Who cares? It's worth it. There is a reception, yes, thank you. November 30th. November 30th is the reception, so maybe Eileen, you can post the reception time and everything, or somebody get that out to us, or I will. Okay, so we'll be there. Can't wait. November 30th, the reception, yeah.
All right. Well, Mr. Edwards?
I actually have a real committee report. The audit committee met earlier this week, yes, yesterday, and we reviewed in depth the one completed audit that was brought to us, and it was an audit of the procurement and contracting pre-award processes. And it revealed some things that, that overall, the processes worked as prescribed. However, there were a few speed bumps that the administration recognized through the audit process and will be making some adjustments. So, again, our internal audit program and processes worked as intended, so that was the, as I say, the, other than that, a few other routine matters, but that was the main item, and again, that will be up on the sharepoint for board members to review whenever you want to look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Do we have any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none, that concludes our formal meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items this evening?
No, ma'am.